Motion for mayor.
Artie Mario, please be seated. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and please note that today's meeting, at least the public part, will be livestreamed to the web. And for voting purposes, please remember to raise your hands to vote for any division. We're aiming to have a break at ten thirty, and we'll see how far we've got. I don't have any apologies. So, I don't have any announcements. Are there any conflicts of interest? So, I would like to move, first of all, that we approve the minutes of the ordinary council meeting from the twenty ninth of June. Do I have a secondere? Thank you, councillor Ahipini-Merse. I now put the motion. Please say aye if you're in favour. Anyone against? Right, I declare the motion carried. I would like to now move to the first item of general business, the District Licensing Committee annual report, and I call on councillor Eagle to introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors. In this report, council is being asked to approve the annual report of Wellington DLC to ARLA, the Alcohol Regulatory and Licensing Authority, before it is lodged as required under the Sale and Supply of Alcohol Act two thousand and twelve. The DLC is now well established and running very smoothly. There have been no changes to its membership this year. Highlights of this year's stats include a number of applications received and processed by the Wellington DLC with a greater number of licences and certificates issued than last year. The support staff have introduced new measures to improve the customer experience of the licensing process, so there's online public notices now. These are cheaper for applicants than newspaper advertising, for example, and easier to find for members of the public. Online application forms also, these are on the council website, and in the future the DLC will move all alcohol licensing applications being able to be filled online. Trends noted by the DLC during the year include participation hearings by body corporates, especially in the CBD, resulting in agreed licence conditions that balance the concerns of residents, for example, around noise and good order with licensee's ability to operate successful businesses. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Eagle. Do I have a secondere? Thank you, councillor Pannett. Do you wish to speak? Does anyone wish to speak on this committee report? Thank you. We will now vote then. Those in favour say aye. Aye. Those against? I declare that carried. Thank you. We'll now move to the next item, which is the report of the Environment Committee meeting of the fourth of August. There are two reports that we will be voting on. I'd like to ask councillor Pannett to introduce the first one, which is the consolidated bylaw part two, animals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, this issue has been debated thoroughly, so I'm not going to make any comment, except to just, again, thank members of the public and staff for all the work that's been done.
Thank you, councillor. Seconded, councillor Ahipini-Merse, do you wish to speak? Councillor Leicester, do you wish to speak? Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Young. Thank you. Does anyone have any amendments? Or, speaking about the animals review, the dog policy is the second one. Right, we will now vote, and does anyone who would like a division? It depe... Councillors? Councillors? It's up to me to decide whether we need to do aye or no. If there's a division called for, then you can raise your hands. If you ask for a division, I'd be happy to have a division. I think that's quite appropriate, councillor Leicester.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. No, point of order at council, all of the rights have to be recorded. It's an outstanding orders.
But you asked me for the minutes. Yes, they are... For the... Did you ask that for the minutes and the confirmation of the minutes, councillor Foster? I think we could do with a little consistency here. Thank you. We will now vote on whether to take the animal part review. So, we're all clear which report we're on, what we're voting on, to adopt the proposed part two animals bylaw. Please raise your hands if you are in favour. It's unanimous vote. Thank you. I declare that carried. Now, we move councillor Pannett to the dog policy. Please introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this has been debated thoroughly, but obviously I'm very pleased at the changes that have been made. I'm not able to second councillor Young's amendment, but happy, very happy to support it.
And seconding the... Excuse me, I'm asking for a secondere of the report in general. Councillor Leicester, thank you. Do you wish to speak? Councillor Young, please speak to your amendment.
Just while we're waiting for the amendment to come up, it's basically just that the residents of Oriental Bay are concerned about having it as a dog area for the period of time that we have suggested. So, I am suggesting an amendment, which I've discussed with my colleagues councillor Pannett, who is another fellow Lampton Ward councillor, and councillor Marsh, who made the original amendment, saying to make it from the first of May rather than the first of April, so it's just a slightly shorter period, and to the thirty first of October, so that's a clearer delineation date. So, that is the time when Oriental Bay beach, the main beach, could be used as an off-leash area, and then at the thirty first of October, it will revert to the current system of having no dogs. So, somewhere there is an amendment beautifully typed by me last night. And councillor Marsh is happy to second it, but you can't see what he's seconding yet.
Thank you, councillor. It is being typed up as you speak. You did send it through last night, that's fine. Councillor Marsh, do you want to speak a secondere?
I'll just leave that for a few moments, if I may, your wish.
Councillor Marsh. Did you wish to speak to it secondarily, or you have nothing further to add?
No, I'll just wait to see if anybody else wishes.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Leicester.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Young for your amendment. I do still have some concerns. I'd seek a response and a right of reply from councillor Young. I do acknowledge and respect, as ward councillors, councillor Young, councillor Pannett, councillor Peck, you know your local community best. I know that the Oriental Bay residents association, however, are opposed, I think, full stop to having dogs. I guess my concern is more around, this is our premier beach. It is an urban beach too, very close to a lot of walkers, runners and cyclists and people who just want to recreate. And we do have some decent weather in the city as well, and today's a stunning example of a day that you might not necessarily want to swim, but you might want to sit on the beach. And I think that while first of May is probably pretty appropriate, it's a good date, whether thirty first of October is too long a period. I mean, we're coming into spring from September, there's a good chance we'll have some reasonable weather in the month of October. I don't own a dog, but I respect dog owners want to be out and walk your dog, I get that. I just wonder whether this is an appropriate balance, given the premier status of Oriental Bay, and I'm seeking feedback from you. Not that I'm going to vote against it necessarily, I just want to hear that, that it's been considered by the association. I'd like to hear the feedback as ward councillors, because I do have some concerns.
Thank you, councillor Leicester. The... I've got councillor Marsh, whose secondere would now like to speak, and then I've got councillor Ritchie.
It is an attractive beach, and we do have a fine day. The thing is, on a fine day, it is rarely used during winter. Let's look at Lisle Bay beach. Now, Lisle Bay beach is probably the most used beach during winter, and I'm talking across the road from the Spruce Goose Cafe. Across there, you get kids, you get families, you get surfers, and the funny thing is, it's a dog off-leash beach, and they all work together. One of the other points that was raised in the email that we received was that there was the danger of dogs running off the beach onto the road. Well, the thing is, you've got a pretty high wall, you've got some steps that the dogs can negotiate, but then you look back at Lisle Bay, there is no such boundary. Dogs can potentially just leave the beach and go onto the road, but again, we very, very rarely, I have never actually seen it, but let's say very rarely, and the off chance that some dogs may. I think that they have got a point, and the point is that it's our premier beach, which councillor Leicester mentioned. But the other elements that they raise in the email, I think, are actually negated through those points of, there is a boundary, the beach is not used. I was there on Sunday, which was a perfectly fine day, and I didn't see a person on that beach at all. The promenade is used extensively, extensively, and I don't think that's quite the same as people being on the beach. It was empty. It's the opportunity there for dog owners, the ten thousand or more dogs that are in the city, to be run, not necessarily on that beach, but it gives a little bit more flexibility for dog owners. We are promoting the fact that we would like people to move to the centre of the city to live. Bodies corporate are now looking to have dogs as part of the agreement, in the body corporate agreements, so people can have dogs in apartments. We have got to provide somewhere for these dogs to go, and it doesn't mean to say we're going to have packs of dogs pooing on Oriental Bay beach. I think that people are going to be pretty responsible, because it's right in the public eye from those people on the promenade, and I believe that we should either leave it as we have it in the original paper, or I will support councillor Young's amendment, just to demonstrate that we are listening to what the community says, that they believe that April could be a busy month. Let's keep our fingers crossed for another fine summer, so April is busy next year.
Thank you, councillor. I would like to call councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors. I, in the absence of another amendment, I will be supporting this amendment, but I would have made it much stronger, and I want to tell you why. First of all, we have heard from the Oriental Bay residents, and I did say that I would endeavour to see what could be done in relation to their concerns and their email. So, let me say first of all that the officers recommended against off-leash dogs on Oriental Beach. That's the first thing. The second thing is that, so this won't help that, is that one other criteria for an off-leash dog place is that it is not used extensively for sporting or other purposes. This beach is used for sporting and other purposes. There are all sorts of what is called picnic games, football, volleyball, actually volleyball competition in the summer, rugby, touch rugby, of course, promenading. There are caregivers on the beach with small children in winter. There is a playground at one end, and I presume that that is part of Oriental Bay, although it's called Freiburg. Well, just excuse me, if you would, if you would not interrupt me...
Councillors, sorry, just a moment. Please, we will let people find out the errors in their own speeches, either by text or by taking your turn in debate, not by interrupting. Thank you. Carry on, please, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you. Oriental Bay beach is used extensively, one of the, for a range of activities in the centre of the city, in one of the most intensively built areas of the city. Dogs and volleyball and touch rugby and little children don't mix easily on a beach, such that this is a tiny beach. There are also health risks. And the other bigger risk, I think, or as big a risk, is that if this area is an off-leash, and I would hope that this would be a trial, it would be difficult to change this now, once it's set in a bylaw, but if this is passed today and if this becomes the norm, then there will be significantly more dogs on that beach, because it is one of the few, for want of a better term, it's not really a dog exercise area, but that's what it will become. And is that what, is that really what council intends? I don't think so, but I also don't believe that we have any option today, right now, this minute, to do anything other than either pass the amendment or vote against it and pass the existing, which is even worse. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ahipini-Merse.
Well, it certainly is turning into a dog's breakfast now, and so I'll endeavour to keep the menu somewhat limited for this breakfast. I won't be supporting the amendment. I understand what it's intended by it. I'll just simply say this. Some of the reasons being given for those who, by councillor Ritchie, for instance, little children sport, well, of course, as councillor Marsh pointed out, all those things take place down at Lisle Bay, probably the most used beach in the Wellington region, not just the city, all those things take place already. And I'd take, if I can take you back, councillors, to the words of councillor Sparrow, when he talked the other day, the other week, about dogs and, you know, the changing times we're in and the humanising aspect, I think, of animals generally with human beings, and certainly in this case. And I've also put the word in civilising. I don't wish to retract, go over all the things I said on my overseas visits, to this word premier, this sort of elitist sort of tone, this premier beach deal. With respect, I think I know what people intend by that, but I don't particularly want to live in a city where people say this is the premier beach, and I live in front of it, this is the jewel in the crown, and all that kind of stuff. That's not where I'm coming from, not at all. I, I'm not criticising at all here, councillor Young, at all, because she's listening to some people, a few people, of the thousands that live in Oriental Bay, and that's fine. I'm, I'm coming from the position now, we're moving forward hugely with a much more progressive attitude to humans and animals interacting in the city, and I don't want to go through that any further. We had the big debates on that a week or so ago. In fact, I think this should be opened up even further, not reduced. But that's for another council to decide on. Here today, no, I'm going to oppose this amendment.
Thank you, councillor. We have got on the amendment councillor Pannett, councillor Sparrow, and other councillors, councillor Foster, and then the right of reply. Thank you.
And I'm just hopefully trying to make a few comments which might be helpful. I support councillor Marsh's contention, as the person who, the councillor lives closest to this area, that it's not used that much. And councillor Ahipini-Merse, I totally agree, we need more animals in our lives, not less, and they can coexist, and we need to learn how to do that. I think it's important to note that Oriental Bay, and I've had conversations with them, we're prepared to compromise, this is, this is part of the compromise, and I thank them for that, because the association wasn't unanimous on that point. The mayor has asked me just whether it could be removed, and the answer is yes, because of course we're going back to do our animal policy, there are still some work to do on the tracks for dogs, so definitely we can. And as a dog owner and a local, I'm going to say, if dog owners abuse this privilege, because it is a privilege, not a right, we will take it off you, okay? So, do not leave dog poo if you are going to use the speech. It will annoy people, and we will take it off you. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much, councillor Young, for moving the amendment.
Councillor Sparrow.
Well, despite being a dog owner, dog lover myself, and believing that dogs do provide a very humanising effect, I think that we do have to strike the right balance with all this. And as we've heard, the Oriental Bay residents association were not unanimous in their views, but their recommendation, I think, provides a very reasonable compromise, and that is dogs off-leash from the first of May until the twentieth of October, so before Labor Weekend, and from four PM to ten AM only. To me, that would be, provide the fairest balance, it makes sense to me, and I would be more comfortable with those limitations. and I would be more comfortable with those limitations.
Thank you councillor, councillor Foster.
He's having a sit-down, isn't he? Look councillors, it's amazing what we end up having big debates about. But first of all, this, this is a new, this is a new area that's been proposed. If you look back at the submissions that were made on it, there actually weren't that many, which is kind of a little bit surprising, given the, given the nature of Oriental Bay Beach and how significant it is. Premier or whatever word you want to use, it is a really significant beach, it's a fabulous asset for Wellington. The views that were expressed there are relatively divided. See, there were 12 people who agreed with the addition, 10 who disagreed, and about half a dozen who made various different comments on it. So not a heck of a lot of feedback. Councillor Ritchie, the playground activities, and nobody else has pointed this out, there's a, there's a, there's a map in there, and it says, allow this but here. Freiburg Beach, don't allow that, but it's pretty clear, so councillor.
Sorry, just a moment, please sit down. Sorry councillor, I'm just actually raising a way that we're managing these procedures. You were very keen that people didn't interrupt you councillor Ritchie. Please do others a courtesy and turn off your, turn off your light. I would like to hear councillor Foster continue.
I wish to raise a point of order.
Sorry, did you, did you actually hear what I just said before?
I wish to raise a point of order.
No, did you hear what I just said, that it was not appropriate for you to interrupt councillor Foster?
But it is appropriate to raise a point of order, it always is, yes. Thank you. And that's actually to avoid interruptions. I just want to say misrepresentation, the beach is what I referred to, where children play.
Ritchie, I'd rule against you, you've quite clearly said both areas. Councillor Foster, continue.
Yeah, and if I can point out, madam mayor, that while this has been happening, the time has stopped now, but it certainly didn't stop for a while, so my time has been somewhat truncated, I think. Councillor Ritchie, I was encouraged, or we were encouraged, to point out the errors in various people's speeches, so I'm pointing out the error in yours. Freiburg Beach is not included, never was included. Look, this area is, is used extensively, I think there is an element of trial in this, and if it doesn't work, we don't do it. But I think the amendment that councillor Young has come up with is perfectly sensible. It's very clear that sometimes we do have nice, fine, you know, Easters and April, and people do want to use that beach. And I think in that situation, having, having it as a off-leash dog exercise area, it's not appropriate. So this makes sense. And essentially, councillor S, the debate that we had, if we were going to not include it at all, which is kind of where you were leading to, that should have been a debate for last time, or there should be an amendment to say, hey, let's take it out altogether, and I didn't see that either. So, so councillors, we either have the choice, to me, of leaving it as it is, which means it's April right the way through to end of October, or we bring it to May, and May makes more sense to me, so I'm going to support the amendment.
Councillor Young, do you wish to exercise right of reply? This is not the biggest issue, councillor Free, I've already called the writer of reply.
Just very briefly, let's get rid of the word premier and call Wellington's most popular beach. It's sheltered, it's calm, it's pretty safe for swimming, that's why it has a raft, which I think is funded by the Local Residents Association, it's a family beach. Councillor Lester said he wanted balance, of course, this is all about balance. Six months dog free, six months not dog free, that is totally 50/50. I agree with councillor Pannett, it will be a privilege for the dog owners, this is an experiment, I guess. We want to see how it goes. But I do believe that we should put humans and children before dogs. I think as a non-dog owner, perhaps we should have had that as a disclosure of interest, that I think families and children, what was that?
Don't encourage interruption, I'm sure, so I think you don't want to hear it.
I think humans and most children should be, should be put before dogs. So I have pleasure in moving the amendment.
Thank you councillors, we will now vote on the amendment. Those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. And those against?
Councillor Lee, councillor Ahepini Mercer.
I declare the amendment carried, we'll now move back to debating the substantive. And I have myself on the speaking list. I just want to say a few things to, say that I think we have moved forward in our way of coexisting with companion animals in this city. I'm particularly delighted that dogs will be able to accompany their owners through and to places in the CBD. And that's for both residents, but also a growing number of people who actually bring their dogs to work. And what a pleasure it is that there are a number of courtyard cafes and so forth, where it's really nice for people to be able to bring their companion animals. So I'm very tempted to raise an amendment that calls this the in, in memory of storm dog policy, but I shan't. So thank you very much, and I think we've come to some very good compromises along the way. And I thank the councillors and the public and the staff for bringing together a very sensible next stage of the dog policy, while noting there are a couple of areas particularly nigho, and potentially as a result of development of animal policy that may result in future amendments at some point. Do I have anyone else speaking on the dog policy as a whole? Then I'll go to writer of return, write, writer of reply. Okay, we will now vote. For which? For the amendment? For the main motion? I thought councillor Ahepini Mercer was going to second the dog policy as a whole as well. Yeah, so did anyone, thank you. He was certainly the, yeah, okay. So please vote on the dog policy as a whole by raising your hands. First of all, those in favour? Is that everybody?
It is.
So I declare that's carried unanimously, with barkings of applause. We will now move to, we are now actually completed, the items are with, in, definitely in public. I'm now going to move to debate whether we take the next paper in public excluded or non-public excluded. I'm just going to tell you how we're going to do this. I'm going to move, councillor Coghlan will second that pursuant to the provisions of the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act, we exclude the public from the following part of the proceedings, except for Stephen McDougall, George Hickton, Sarah Horder, Bid Kearney from Audit New Zealand, Adam Holloway, Chris Whelan, David Perks, Hugh Kettle. And the grounds are as described in the paper. The withholding of the information is necessary to protect, that would unreasonably prejudice commercial position. I'm going to ask Kane Partner to come and speak to us on the matter of public excluded, and also make clear what after the debate will be able to be made public and when. And then we will vote, or debate if you want and then vote.
Yeah, thank you madam mayor. Essentially, there are sort of two main grounds for this particular item to be part of the publicly excluded agenda item. I think most importantly, it's important to realise that the negotiations between the council and TMML are still ongoing. So to that extent, because the negotiations are continuing, we haven't actually signed the agreement, we're still in the negotiation phase. And so in addition to that, of course, the, both sort of the, the terms within which we are negotiating, some of those terms and some of the financials have made its way through to the report for councillors. Oh, sorry. So what I, what I was saying is that the, the report, in this particular case, contains commercially sensitive information, it contains information around the financials, information around some of the terms that are subject to the negotiations between the council and TMML as well. And so the information does need to be kept in confidence to safeguard and protect the, the commercial position, both of the council and in particular TMML, as I say, particularly in circumstances where the negotiations are still ongoing. So that, to a large extent, is the main reason why this particular item has been put into the public, publicly excluded item. I'm happy to take any questions.
And what was going to actually be made available, both immediately and slightly further into the future?
There are two things that we propose to make available. The first is that we can provide, subject to resolution from the council, we can provide a redacted version of the report. The redacted versions, of course, will be, will exclude those confidential or sensitive matters. The other aspect which can be made available to the public, and I've had a chat to the, to Derek about this, is a redacted business case can also be made available. So those are the two key aspects that we think we can make available to the public.
And you'll provide a recommendation to that effect for me to move?
Yes.
Thank you. We do have some, I don't, I wouldn't go away quite yet, because I think this is such an important issue that I would like to permit councillors to ask a few questions of you. And if you wish to call upon any of the legal experts that necessary, that would also be fine. I've got councillor Richie, Pannett and Foster.
Wish to debate the question. No, it's all very clear, been done many times. Thank you.
Thank you Kane. For me, it's perhaps not so clear why this should be public excluded. So what I'm unclear about is this is public money, so why should we be holding it back from the people who are paying for it? And then the other thing is, why commercial sensitivity? I mean, there's only basically one or two people in the game. No one's, it's not being debated, as I understand it. I mean, there's not this massive profit drive, so why, why do we need to do that? And I'm certainly, just in the third question, I guess, I'm certainly no, have absolutely no intention of leaking the information, as sometimes happens around this organisation. But I would like to know if you can actually push this a bit further and see what else we can make public, because I think there is a legitimate public interest in how much the developer is going to be earning and how much TMML is.
Well, first of all, your worship, this is consistent with our behaviour in the past. So what we recommend to you is that we withhold commercial sensitivities, as we have with the WARA agreement, as we have with the SEVENS agreement. We, and we have debated that with the ombudsman on several occasions, and we have maintained that position. And that isn't on the basis of commercial sensitivity. As Kane said, we haven't concluded the negotiations. And at the risk of sounding slightly emotional, this is out of respect for our partners, who we've been working with for nearly 10 years on this programme. And so it is, in our mind, absolutely essential that we maintain this confidentiality. You are privy to it, of course, because indeed you are the decision makers. But we believe, and without drawing our partners into the debate, they consider that the commercial, for the commercial decisions to be made publicly available, it would be inappropriate. I personally think it will challenge our relationship. Now, this is a trust and confidence relationship we've had, and we've maintained that, you've maintained that. And I think to breach that at this critical stage will bring that relationship into, into, into challenge and question. So that's my, I think Kane, what I have, but as I say, nothing inconsistent with this councillors. In, in, in my experience, we have maintained this procedure and process for a variety, with a variety of agreements, on that very basis of respect for a private sector partner. And I, and I, look, I fully appreciate, as an old campaigner here, and a long time officer, I do, I do appreciate the pressure. But at the end of the, and the, and the, the conflict between the public and the private. But if we are to form partnerships, meaningful ones, then we have to, I'm afraid, hold the line on confidentiality. Thank you.
The only other thing I would add to that, of course, is that this is really a question of timing. In other words, when is it appropriate to release this confidential sensitive information to the public? So it's not a question of if, but it's a question of when. And given that we are, as I say, in the middle of negotiating those terms, in our view, it's entirely appropriate to maintain that degree of confidentiality during the course of those negotiations at this particular point.
Okay, and so, look, that would in a way be fine, I can appreciate the answer. But you're saying that you're not going to release all the information post any decision that we make, and that's, I guess, where the concern is, why can't it just all be released once it's all negotiated?
Well, we, we're troubled by that because, as I say, then we breach, we, we, we breach the very premise of the agreements themselves. And I can't imagine, as I say, just by way of, and it may help by way of example, I can't imagine the reaction of the World of Werewolf Arts Company if we released the commercial terms in our relationship, in our sponsorship relationship with them. So I'm going to say that's, 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 that's our reality. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, I've now got questions from councillor Foster, and then councillor Free, and then. No, no, councillor, I know you want to debate, this is just questions.
Look, thank you, a number of questions from me, because, so, 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 just, you know, just Googling online here to say, you know, arrangement with details, movie museum etcetera. So there's a paper which we released back in, I think, in March. Now, I know that things have evolved since then, it's redacted in, in places, but relatively small. And I guess the question I've got is, and I, I fully accept that there are some elements of the deal which you will always want to keep confidential. The, the issue is here that the vast bulk of it, 95% plus of what's in the documents, 95% plus of what's been in documents, 95% plus of what is in the documents in front of us, a lot of that's in the public realm already. And the question I'm trying to get to is, what can we segregate so that we have the chance? Because I don't, we're not going to go, I'd be very surprised if any of us are going to go anywhere near debating the issues around the commercial parts of that. The debate will be about an iconic building versus a non-iconic building, and this is great for Wellington, all wax and lyrical. So, so the question I'm asking is, is can we not segregate those two things? That may be that, when I asked Danny this question on Monday, Monday, yeah, on Monday, exactly about this, he said, well, look, what we could do is we could put a plain copy paper, you know, with the bits we don't want in it, and that becomes a public paper, so we have the ability to debate a public paper. We don't have that. But can we at very least segregate the, the resolutions and say, look, what we'll do, we'll debate the resolutions, we're not debating the paper, paper's sitting out there. And then you can release the redacted papers. So there is a way of us as the people's representatives making our views clear on a $150 million decision.
I think councillor, it's indeed your decision to make. I mean, our position, our position is, is our position. And I was just, I was just talking to, to Adam a moment ago, and he said, well, at the end of the day, it's for council's decision to make. I mean, so if you resolve that, and I'm not leaving it at your feet, it is our advice and we're not being churlish about it at all. If that is your decision, that you wish to strip this paper out, there'll be some physical challenges around that in terms of getting the work done, all right? And we are, and timing, as Kane said, is critical here. We, we will have a fully redacted report, and, and we're happy to pursue that immediately after this meeting. But if, indeed, if you resolve that, and you know, as I say, my scars are long healed over councillor, in terms of making recommendations and those recommendations not being accepted. So, you know, as I say, not, not leaving it at your feet, but I think that's, that's an open palmed approach to it, because otherwise we could probably spend another hour in this sort of ping pong conversation, which doesn't take us anywhere really.
Derek, I'm not, I'm not not taking your advice, I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm asking how you can help us so that we can actually have a conversation about the bits which are not sensitive, and take the sensitive bits out of it. Now, if you're ready, I don't know how far away your redacted copy is, you said that it was going to be released afterwards, but if you had a redacted copy, we go, right, let's, can we debate that, as opposed to what we've got in front of us? You know, I'm just, I'm asking for your assistance in doing this, not saying don't, not accepting your advice.
Okay, well, so the, so the redacted version, the redacted version is not available at the moment. I think the, the interconnected nature of both the commercial terms and indeed the financials, they are, I mean, in my view, and, you know, Danny's the numbers guy here, but in my view, they are inextricably linked. So teasing them out.
You're going to have to do it anyway if you're going to redact it.
Well, no we won't, we'll, we'll just redact, we will just blackout.
Yeah, exactly, you just, just talk this bit, okay. So, and the last bit of that is, the resolutions themselves, is there anything in the resolutions themselves which is particularly difficult?
That are particularly difficult?
Is there anything in the resolutions themselves which is particularly difficult in terms of your concerns about confidentiality?
I think, I think timeframes, as Kane said, are important whilst we've, we've, we've looked at November as a key date. You know, we have maintained all along that, and I know Kevin will talk about this later, that there is a risk in this project, we're not there yet. And we have got some way to go with, with our, with our partners to reach an agreement, so.
We will answer that, but it's the resolutions themselves, I mean, if, is there anything confidential, sorry?
Kane, do you have a suggested res- Do you have a suggested resolution that you think we should be moving in public? That would be helpful.
What I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand is whether if the resolutions were the only thing, madam mayor, that we had in public, not the paper itself, whether in fact that would be acceptable. So the paper itself remains public excluded, but the resolutions do not. Or if there is some element of the resolutions which is a problem, that that is dealt with in PE. And it's not, madam mayor, madam mayor, we have quite frequently on major issues, we've had some bit in public excluded and some bit in public. So it's not unusual.
I think my only response, madam chair, through you is that, again, is that they are, these, that the financials, the terms agreement, the both Willis Bond document and the TML document, they are all extricably linked. And we believe in order to protect all parties, that the recommendations should be taken as a whole. That's our position, madam chair.
Councillor, I think I have a possible helpful suggestion. We might just take a slightly early break, that we may have something, do this in PE and then we have a final recommendation that says in agree in principle to move to this, the iconic building design. And that might be all we do in public. But I'm not sure that that's really going to be worthwhile. So, okay. Okay, let's move. We've got councillor Free, Coghlan and Leicester with questions and/or suggestions before we move to debate. I just think it's really important that we try and come to a common agreement if we can. And if we can't, then we will get on and debate it, debate whether we do public excluded or not. Councillor Coghlan.
Okay, so, look, I think it is an exciting project. But I guess my main question is, standing, sorry. Oh, not for questions. My main question is really, given that you've said that lots of things are still under negotiation, the terms, the prices, a lot of things, I presume, are still under negotiation. My main question is why are we actually bringing this to the table now? Especially given that we have a new council arriving in, you know, a couple of months.
Councillor, that is not about whether it's confidential or not. We are, we are asking questions about whether it should be PE or not. Not about whether this is the right time to debate it.
It is slightly germane though, because if it wasn't so up in the air, we might be able to not...
I'm sorry, I just don't think that's the, within the topic. Councillor Coghlan.
So on the 8th of December, we debated the paper, which actually was an agreement in principle to spending $134 million on the Convention Centre Movie Museum in PE. So why is there a hue and a cry now over essentially debating the same issue in PE? Was there a public outcry?
I think that sounds very much like debating with your colleagues rather than asking a question, okay? Well, is there any difference? No, no, are you asking, is there any difference?
No, I'm asking, was there such a public outcry that we took these decisions in PE that we shouldn't do it in PE now?
Madam, madam mayor, I think there was, there was some social media comment, but I don't think they were rioting in the streets.
Your councillors, last question for the officers on councillor, on whether it should be in PE or not. Councillor Leicester, if you want to illuminate the issue.
Thank you. I do want to ask a couple of questions of the councillors. I want to acknowledge that George and Sarah are here, but they didn't have the opportunity to respond. So I'll ask you, given your dealings with TMML, their take on it. TMML are a wholly critical partner to this project proceeding, are they not?
Absolutely.
And their wishes are, they operate a private business as well. We aren't yet concluded. They don't release any of the details about the remainder of their private business into tap, into public information. And this is at a critical stage of the negotiation as well. And it has not yet 100% been completed, has it?
That's correct. I think it's important in the context of that question to indicate that our decision today is a, as I said earlier, this, our relationship is about trust and confidence with TMML. And our decision today, or your decision today, should I say, is about giving them additional confidence that we are, we're going to blink first and we are going to come to the table now with a full, with a full commitment to assist them in reaching a final conclusion with their, with the negotiations. So it is at a critical stage. And as I say, 10 years is a long time. So we are at a special time, yep.
And in your experience, I mean, with an external partner dealing with a council, it takes a lot of trust and confidence to work with us. We're not the easiest beast to work with necessarily. So we want to, in full confidence, respect the wishes of our partners as well.
That's right. I think, yes, okay, yes, correct.
We are stretching what's debate and what's not. I'd now like to move to, and thank you both very much. I'd like to move to debate, or I've moved, and councillor Coghlan, a second. Councillor Coghlan, did you wish to speak at the moment to public excluded? Not at this moment. I've got councillor Ritchie, Panett and Foster, who wish to debate whether we do or don't go to PE. And councillor Leicester.
Madam mayor, councillors, it's my strong view that this matter should be debated in public. And let me tell you why. First of all, I have expressed my concerns that partial confidential information was released by two councillors, which included a drawing, which included the fact that apparently no decision will be made until November, which included a cost, but the cost is only a partial cost and I'll come back. And which included a, an effusive statement that construction would start in January next year, which if you look at the programme is entirely, councillor Coghlan, incorrect. The tenders will not even be finalised by then. So I, I just want to say that there should be full disclosure to the public. This, this project is a very important project. There should be total public scrutiny. This should be able to stand up to public scrutiny. We are talking about $150 million, but not only that. And that's the other partial information that has been released. We are also talking about the Convention Centre losses and the subsidy, which are significant over many, many, you know, debt over 25 years and so on and so on, which were not disclosed in that partial disclosure of confidential information. I am also concerned, and I have read the report, I read the report thoroughly, to read that we may release something, but it will be redacted. That is that some parts will be removed. And finally, and ultimately, the financial information, if it is readily available and easy to read, is available in the long term plan. So I just want to say that there has been the impression given, particularly with the latest leaking or release of confidential information by two councillors, that this project and this contract has reached finality. When actually, we've heard today, and I also teased out in the last two days, and it's clear in the documents, that it actually hasn't reached finality yet. My concern is public scrutiny and also that the council retains control over the final expenditure and the final contract. So I will be voting strongly, strongly, I'll just be voting. I'll be voting against going into public excluded. This should stand up and should be able to stand up to public scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Unfortunately, the strength of one's convictions does not increase the number of the votes that you hold. Or that would be a very interesting proposition. I now have councillor Panett and then councillor Foster.
Thank you, madam mayor. And look, often I think it is valid to go into public excluded. And I appreciate the arguments that are being put to, around maintaining relationships. But I am concerned, and there's two things. One is, this is not like many of the other ventures we go and do. This is basically being funded by the council. It is a council project. And as I said to one of our constituents, just reminding myself, it is not our money, it is your money. So why should we be stopping people knowing how their money is being spent? It is not acceptable in this case. Furthermore, I think the sensitivity is, in this case, overly sensitive. There has been a long process around this. It's not, you know, there's no competition between various parties. So what have they got to hide? And as far as I understand, some of the push behind this is quite altruistic anyway. So why would you be particularly worried about that? So I think we should, at the very least, when we, we should, we should do this in public. If we can't, then we will certainly debate when we go into public, what information can be released? And I will be pushing for most of that to be done.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Foster.
Yeah, look, thanks, madam mayor. And I'm going to start by saying I don't agree with councillor Ritchie that everything should be in public, because there are clearly some bits which should not. But I don't think councillors will want to go there in terms of the debate anyway. That's not the issue which we will be, end up being debating. And I guess what I was looking for from officers, and I'm looking, you know, your suggestion, madam mayor, might be a way through, is that there is some way that we can have the wider conversation, which is not about those details, and express our views on that. Because I think that is an important thing to be able to do. We have had, I think most of our conversations about this have probably have been in PE, but I'm sure we've had some in public. And, and I think that there should be an opportunity to do that. And I think it's, frankly, it's a good news story. This is a great news story for Wellington. And I think most of us want to be able to say exactly that kind of thing. And why, in particular, we want to support a really high quality building. Those are the kind of things we want to talk about. A lot of those, they're not the things which are in public, in public excluded. And, I mean, what we're talking about here essentially is we're building a building. And then, that's fine. There's nothing greatly commercially confidential about that. There might be a few things around the arrangements with the people who are actually doing the actual construction. But nobody's going to get into that issue. The issue which has the greatest, the greatest sensitivity around it is the tenant of the building. And that is a place where, I mean, other than saying, well, there's a fantastic tenant to have in the building, I don't think anybody is going to get into any sort of level of detail. So, madam mayor, I'm really looking for you to be able to assist us, to be able to have that conversation in some way. And that will determine my vote on the, on the, this bit in public excluded or not. And I really think, I mean, officers, I did signal this to officers on Monday, from my perspective, and I'm sure I wasn't the only one, to say, look, can you give us a hand in allowing us to have this, a conversation in public, as well as dealing with some stuff in private?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Peck.
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. I'm a supporter of open government, always have been, always will be. But one of the things I do understand is that there are occasions when things do need to be taken soberly and with thought before anything is outlined to protect both sides of any particular debate, frankly. The ratepayers are going to be exposed under this agreement. And the last thing we need to do is put the ratepayers in a position where their position is undermined by the release of information prior to things being completely settled. That's really, really important. And it's not only just about this particular set of negotiations, madam mayor. We also rely on the trust of the business community and others on any occasion that we go into commercial negotiations, any occasion. And were we to take a decision today not to deal with sensitive matters in, in public excluded, we send a message to anyone else that ever wishes to deal with us that we frankly don't take the commercial sensitivities around those things terribly seriously at all. I want to raise another matter which I think is important. I regard the council, frankly, as being pretty akin to the government cabinet. The government cabinet takes decisions. They take decisions in private. They then announce those decisions. All papers are then discoverable, all papers. Everything that's happened, every minute, every note, every phone call, every decision around a matter taken in cabinet is, is able to be made available under the, under our Official Information Act. The same is true of the council. Any document that we hold at the conclusion of a process is discoverable. We have rights to appeal that to the ombudsman if we think it shouldn't be. But by and large, my experience is that the ombudsman, when looking at stuff, unless there is stuff which is personal specific, will probably release it. So the public get the information and get it in a timely manner. So, madam mayor, I think on this occasion, this is not a matter of hiding from the public. This is simply a matter of good business. We have a responsibility as guardians of the, of the ratepayers' money to do good business. And so I will be supporting the resolution that we go into public excluded. And let's deal with the issues later on as to what we can release and when we can release it.
Thank you very much, councillor Peck. I'll take right of reply and just make a few points. Because this is obviously a matter of significant public interest. And it is quite right that we talked about whether we should or whether we shouldn't go into it. Now, first of all, speaking at the council table is not the only opportunity that people have to express their support or otherwise of a project. So whether you actually have your three minutes in the sunshine now or actually just say, what a terrific project, or in the unlikely event that you don't agree with it, is also appropriate. I think councillor Peck summed it up very well when he said that because it's public money, that doesn't always protect the ratepayers' interests by dealing with absolutely everything in public. For example, councillor Panett's portfolio of water and waste. You would want to get the best deal environmentally and commercially for new set of pipes in a suburb. You would not expect to publish all of the tenders. Because it's not only about that particular project, it's about our relationship with suppliers, designers and partners for many other relationships going forward. With the town hall, would we want to see on the front page of the Glorious Dominion Post all of the different numbers that had been submitted? I think you would find that the commercial relationship with people would not be so good. I think in an ideal world, if we could utterly rely on each other to remember which bits were meant to be commercially sensitive and which were not, we could have separated out one recommendation. But I think the risks and the trust are too high. It's not as if this is a matter that has not been consulted on. We have consulted on it. There are no huge differences to what was consulted on. I think that in the end, it is appropriate to debate this in public excluded. And I will have a recommendation that says as much as possible will be made available as soon as possible. So I'm now, councillors... No, I'm not. Because councillor, we had a debate on whether to do the project or not as a whole. The issue today is another step in that process. And we will be able to say why we think it's a great building or not through whatever channels you choose to, really. So I now will call on councillors to vote whether we do go into public excluded for this item or not. Those in favour of going... Councillor, I've been reminded that we will always put our hands up. Preferably not when you're confirming the minutes. But we will always put our hands up for these decisions. So those in favour of going into public excluded for this item?
Councillor May, councillor Peck, councillor Coghlan, councillor Wolf, councillor Lee, councillor Leicester, councillor Ayden Minser, councillor Marsh, councillor Eagle, councillor Young, councillor Sparrow, councillor Free, councillor Panett.
Those against, no, councillor Panett wasn't. Those against going, councillor Foster, councillor Ritchie and councillor Panett. I declare it carried. We will now go into public excluded. I'd like the live streaming to be turned off and we will start the...